Next up, we have the Warren Valley. I'm sorry, the Warren's Charter Section 8.9. We're going to go ahead and go right into it without a break if you guys don't mind.
Do you want to make a break?
Nope.
No break.
Let's go ahead and keep it going. Let's go ahead and keep it going. So this one is Warren's Charter Section 8.9. I'm going to have the Corporation Counselor speak, Chief of Staff if you'd like, and of course, our Treasurer, Isaac Clayton. And then we'll go ahead and go to the audience and members of Zoom.
As you may recall, back in July of last year, I ended up sending a letter to the City Council regarding payment procedures and discussing City Charter Section 8.9. And suggesting a way in which this matter could end up being addressed, which is that there are many types of payments that are made by the city. All of those payments are supposed to be based on warrants that are issued for payment and approved by the council. And what I discussed in my letter was that we appear to have been trying to comply with Section 8.9 of the charter, but it is unclear whether or not this was done over the years. And frankly, we don't have any record showing that it specifically has ended up being done. And so therefore, I gave suggested language, at least preliminarily, to a motion that would authorize certain sorts of payments, as long as they were within budget amounts, to end up being made between meetings. And that would be A, employee wages, salaries, benefits, contributions, and contractually mandated items; payments for utilities, insurance, where the City Council has previously authorized the city's contractual relationship with the provider; payments may be made for the purchase of materials, goods, supplies, and other things or things of value, or other things for a cost not to exceed $1,500. And then additionally pursuant to Charter Section 8.9, the total amount of such payments made between any successive regular meetings of the City Council shall not exceed $1,500,000 or such amount as the City Council may from time to time establish. And then I was to be directed to prepare one or more appropriate ordinances, resolutions, or policies to formalize and improve the city's payment procedures consistent with that. And frankly, other than that this is something that needs to be done to formalize what had often been done over the years, and frankly, it's been done as long as I've been involved in city government, I just think that this is something that really needs to end up being done and should be done. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mad Treasurer?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council Chair and Honorable Counsel for hearing us this evening. Corporate Counselor Miyaki has already stated, and I'm sure you have a copy of his July 20th, 2021 letter. From a treasurer's perspective, I came before you at a previous council meeting and shared several concerns in how we were applying this, that particular Section 8.9 of the charter. So that was, you know, is very important that we address these things because what we need is clarity to provide continuity in our daily operations, a very clear interpretation, concise, so we can be consistent in doing so. However, I did want to state, and as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, we really don't, looking at the past, we really cannot find, or we don't, we're not aware of how this was handled. But I did want to go to the resolution on page two, and I know that Chief of Staff, we met on this and discussed it, but there's two sections in here that we flagged for you that we feel is something we need to talk about so the council body can make a fair decision. Because whatever you decide, whatever you adopt, we are following, right? That's what you do, you legislate. So the first thing, if you look down and you look into Section C, where we talk about this $1,500, that's under procurement. It's not actually under how much do we spend or bring before the council, but we agree that it's necessary. However, based on our conversations and review, we, our recommendation from the finance team is $5,000 versus 1,500 because of inflation and other things. 1,500 really doesn't go very far, as you mentioned earlier. So that was the first thing we noted. The second thing that we noted that we wanted you to take into consideration, if you continue on down through that Item C, and if you read where it's the one and a half million dollars, we're making a recommendation of 3 million. And I'm going to tell you why we need to have an exception or pre-approved agreements. Because if you have three payrolls, which you do in a month sometimes, your payroll runs $700,000 to $750,000 each pay period, you're already over that amount if you have three pay periods in one month. So that is our recommendation, but everything else we agree with, and again, it is about being compliant with the City Charter, Section 8.9. We're just seeking that continuity as Mr. Miyaki outlined for us in his letter and his resolution that you have before you. We know you're not voting on that, but we're asking you to take into consideration the two points I just shared with you. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman? So I want a little bit of a...
You used to be.
I'm sorry.
They got rid of me.
Mad Treasurer.
Just kidding.
Mad Treasurer. I have a little bit of a concern on my end. The over $1,500, I get that. And I get that that needs to be raised. I know that's been used for years and years and years, and obviously with inflation, that needs to be brought up. But I do have some serious concerns about the $3 million threshold. And I want some clarification. It just seems like that's a pretty high number. I know it's budgeted for, but it just seems to be like a pretty high number on that. And so I'd like to get your input on that, and then eventually, of course, Gary Miyaki, maybe our Chief of Staff.
Well, from my understanding, remember, these are items that are already approved in your budget, right? Your adopted budget. So correct me if I'm wrong, and Gary's right here, you would not be able to exceed those approved amounts?
Right.
Okay. So there's where your cap comes in, but the concern is like in between meetings. And payroll is one of those things that, you know, has to be made.
But can payroll go all the way up? Because remember, this particular, this particular item right here is in between council meetings.
Yes.
Council meetings are every other week. Well, we have study sessions, but I'm talking about the voting council.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Unless it's a holiday and things happen.
Correct. But in general, it's every other week, twice a month in general. So can that get up as high as 3 million?
Well, again, it depends on uncontrollables. If you have a holiday or an emergency, or who knows what, but like I use an example with payroll, we do have months where there's three pay periods in a month.
July.
Yeah, July. So you got, you know, but, but this is just taken into consideration to prepare for those exceptions. And what, what I had said, and I think our Chief of Staff agreed, was the exception list because we know there's going to be things like that that happens, like where you have three payrolls.
Up to 3 million?
Well, that's going to be up to the council body to decide. I can go, for me, it honestly, it's whatever you decide, right?
Right.
But I do want to just say, there are going to be, here's another example, here's another example, is your pension contributions. So we just did the general government pension contribution in Act 345. That's over 6.5 million dollars, just right there, in one sweep. So there's things like that unless, Mr. Miyaki, you have another recommendation. We're open to that.
Okay. Well, Gary, go ahead, go ahead, and then after, it's Councilman Tom Wenzel and Councilwoman Beal.
Yeah, I was just going to say, certainly the $5,000, the only reason I have a concern with regard to the 1,500, and I have to end up looking at our current bidding ordinance because it's been a while, even though I drafted it, but I've drafted a lot of ordinances. So we could change it to 5,000, but we might need to end up doing that, not just by a resolution, but by an actual ordinance change. With respect to the 1.5 million, it's whatever you feel comfortable with. I mean, remember, part of the reason for doing this is to clearly authorize, what my understanding was of the minimum that we could end up doing, to basically reflect what has been done informally for years, based on what everyone believed to have been covered and already authorized. So...
My concern is if everything, if something's been done that way for years, it doesn't make it okay.
Well, that's why I said the 1.5.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm okay with raising that, but I'm just not, personally, at least initially, I'm just not comfortable with 3 million.
Well, and just to put something out there, Plant Moran took kind of the position that essentially, if it's approved in the budget, then that potentially is sufficient in terms of approval with regard to the Section 8.9. At least, that's my understanding. And my discussions with people was, no, that's incorrect. So, so the issue with regard to the 1.5 versus the 3 million dollars, in my mind, is in part based on what the council feels comfortable with, dealing with the idea that if something is so disproportionate, it could throw off the budget, and if I was on the council, I'd want to know if that was what was going to end up happening. So the real issue here with regard to that amount is, the way I would view it, if I was in your shoes, is can the administration, or does the administration justify that by virtue of, for example, certain critical points where money is needed? And I would assume that Mariana is going to end up addressing that issue, and the city treasurers address that. But from a legal standpoint, it's not, it's not as much of an issue, other than what would be a prudent practice. And in my view, it would not be a prudent practice to end up, you know, making it like 10 million dollars, and then you've got a hole in your budget.
Yeah, my issue is transparency, checks and balances, and then, to me, the more layers of checks and balances and, and eyes on it, the lesser probability of potential issues, problems, or God forbid, you know, a whole other section of illegalees.
Right.
So next, I'm going to go to Councilman Tom Wenzel, and then we'll go to Mariana, and then we'll go to Councilman Constance.
Gary addressed one of the things. The other thing, I just wanted a quick answer. What's our normal payroll for...
700,000 to 750,000 per pay period.
Almost eight.
Mm-hmm. You can round it if you want.
And the pay periods are biweekly, right, Treasurer?
No.
Treasurer, the pay periods are every two weeks, aren't they?
Yes.
So that could be, so it wouldn't be like, you know, 750, is it per week or per period?
Every period, every two weeks.
Every two weeks. Right.
Yeah. And that, remember, that includes your payroll taxes, social security, that's everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No pension.
Mariana, and then Councilman Constance. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. Hello, council members. I just wanted to share a little bit of what I've discovered through this process. So first of all, historically, I've felt like the $1,500 limit was established because that is the limit that we currently have on bidding process. So in our procurement process, that's the limit that's there, but there was nothing associated with that for actual purchases or warrants. So that's just a little bit of something. And I also want to point out that there are a few, there is one more thing that's very important for us to include in this, and I know that it's been discussed, but I'd rather do things as a package rather than piecemeal things because it's easier to track them in the long run and put them in one document. But I know we've had a conversation about potentially allowing the budget amendments to be done if the department itself is going above its approved budget for the department, rather than line item by line item. So we just went through all of the line items that need approving for the next council meeting, and it is quite an exhaustive process when truly what we're doing is not going above the budget, we're just staying within the department budgets but moving funds around. So I would like to potentially include that as well, if, if that's possible. Additionally, again, the main problem with this is the city has very contradicting documents. So the charter says one thing, the policies say another, the practice is another. So what we're trying to do here is just bring all of those documents and all of that history together and documenting one that we will hopefully move forward with in the future.
Charter supersedes all those, though, doesn't it?
It does, but the charter itself is very vague, so it doesn't give enough detail for the practices that actually need to be done. So what do you do? You follow whatever the practice had been or whatever the policy had been.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, Corporation Counsel, let me land it.
To both, and to the Chief of Staff's comment, I mean, that was the issue that our former comptroller, Dave Sabuda, brought up, and it's, to me, it's ludicrous. So there's the roof and an amount budgeted for the roof. And then it turns out the amount is, is $10,000 more. So we issue payment, and then it's incumbent upon the department or whoever to get the budget amendment to budget that, or like you say, move the money around. To go through a lot of rigmarole to say the charter doesn't allow for that is ridiculous. And then to Mr. Miyaki, the resolution speaks about payroll, correct? So it's, the idea is here to allow the city to function and to issue the payroll.
Right. The, well, the proposed motion specifically has to do with employee wages, salary, benefits, contributions, and contractually mandated items are all covered. So yes, it would cover those, those types of items.
Yeah, it's in the regular course of business. So if employee Abdullah, we passed the budget and we said, you get 40,000 a year, we issue your paycheck.
Right. Council Chair, the one, the one thing I did want to point out, because I think it's created some confusion between the bidding procurement amount and Section 8.9, is that the reason why the amount shown here in this motion needs to track the amount of the procurement is otherwise you potentially end up having the mayor authorized by virtue of this motion to end up doing something that he and the city cannot do because it would violate the bidding procedures that we have. In other words, he would potentially be able to go out and buy something even though there's an ordinance that specifically says that there is a certain dollar threshold. So the two issues, even though they might seem to be unrelated, they're related in terms of the practical working here. And the $1,500 was just an amount that was used because that's what had always been done and understood. Again, it could be changed, it's not necessarily a problem, but it needs to track what's included in the procurement ordinance. Otherwise, what we have is a situation where the mayor goes out and, let's say, let's say the amount is $1,500, the mayor goes out and buys something of $3,000 value without going out and following that because $5,000 is what's stated here, but that's inconsistent with the ordinance.
So you're saying they should both be changed to be the same exact dollar amount? Just make sure.
Yes, that is correct.
And, okay. All right. So with all this, this particular motion here, is there any changes that council members have that they want the Corporation Counsel to change? I know for myself personally, I, I don't like seeing the 3 million dollar amount. I think we could raise it a little bit, but I, for myself personally, I'd feel more comfortable staying either at the 1.5 million or at the 2 million. But I'd like to get other council members.
I agree.
You guys got to give your opinions so that Gary can know how to devise this.
I thought we were delivering.
No, you've just given your opinion. You can.
I'll just change it.
Or he can leave the dollar amount open, and when we vote at a council meeting, we could add it on there.
Yeah, actually, Councilman, you could add this on to the next agenda, and frankly, that would be my recommendation.
But is it in ready format that the Chief of Staff is comfortable with, Mad Treasurer? Are you comfortable with the format other than the dollar amount?
Yes, yeah, the proposed resolution, but I agree...
Well, but the 1,500 would change, obviously.
Yes, yes.
To 5,000.
That is correct.
And then, at least, you know what, so at least we have a number on there. Let's make it 2 million for right now. And if we as a body decide anything different, we'll decide during the council meeting.
Right.
Is there anything else between the three sections of our government they are concerned about? Anything else from the council members?
I had a question, quick question for Chief of Staff. How do you feel about the 3 million? What's your personal opinion?
The 3 million?
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned. So I would, I would ask to clarify the language on that a little bit because the way it reads is, again, A, payments may be made for employee wages, salaries, benefit contributions, and contractually mandated items, contractually mandated. B, payments may be made for utilities, insurance, where the contractually mandated items, contractually mandated. C, payments may be made for the purchase of materials, goods, supplies, and other thing or things for a cost not to exceed $1,500, or, sorry, 5,000, whichever number we choose. Additionally, pursuant to City Charter Section 8.9, the total amount of such payments made between any successive regular meeting of the City Council shall not exceed $1,500,000. We constantly, with contractual agreements, exceed the $1,500,000. We have ARPA funds right now. Those projects are $14 million and above that you have to make payments right away. So I feel like I would be constantly violating these rules with major development projects that are on the pipeline for the city to go through. Again, I would be perfectly okay with having exceptions or separating it, right? So perhaps you could have additionally, any expenses that are above that $5,000 threshold cannot exceed the $1,500, 1500, sorry, 1,500,000. However, again, if they are contractually agreed upon and approved by the council, there should be no limit. Because I don't know, I don't know what that means. If you're allowed for a permit of $14 million for water main breaks, then you already approved it, and I have to pay it. So I'm concerned about that.
What are, do you have any downsides of raising it to 3 million? I mean, what would...
Again, it depends on what you're limiting. Are you limiting pre-approved contractual agreements, or are you limiting the $5,000 that are the limit that needs to be presented? I, I don't know. Again, there needs to be more clarity.
Remember, the 5,000 dollars that can get, obviously, over the 3, 2, or 1.5 million dollar mark. Corporation Counsel.
To answer Councilman Wenzel's issue, and not to, not to try to be a W. Downer about this, I can use that term, but the issue becomes whether or not, if something is contractually mandated and already authorized in terms of the budget, whether or not you as a body are going to be able to track whether or not you're on your way to going over the amount. That's what the potential difficulty is. That's the only, you know, that's the reason why it's, you know, like the Plant Moran approach was that if it's authorized, it's authorized. Well, then you could end up spending things, say you have a million dollars set aside for something, you could be up to that million dollars six months in or five months in, and all that money could end up being, having been spent and not necessarily have a clear notion of having approved that and not know until the administration comes for a budget amendment that you are approaching that difficulty. That's, that's the downside or potential downside.
Gary, just, so at the same token, though, if there's a contractually authorized and approved amount of, let's just use hypothetically, I don't know, $800,000, but we can also, at a council meeting, reject that amount, couldn't we? Yeah, obviously, we'd leave ourselves potentially open to a lawsuit by whoever that particular contractor is, but just the same way you're saying, it's already been approved, but at the same time during the council meeting, we could decide, like, let's say company ABC, we can as a body vote and say, we don't want to pay, actually, we've almost done that with the garbage and, you know, such and such.
Right. And those are not normally going to end up being issues. If you're doing it with respect to something where there is a clear amount that's going to end up being due, and you're going to have it budgeted, all right? So for example, you've got bond payments you're going to make, you've got insurance payments, you've got utility payments, and they're generally going to end up being the same. That's not the problem. But in my experience, overtime, employee overtime has been something that has been a really big issue, and people have not necessarily ended up budgeting well with respect to that. It's been overly optimistic in terms of the way people, I think, have approached that because, and I say that just as a matter of having observed over years, because it seems like everyone complains about overtime, this body complains about overtime, and that's the difficulty. You may not know because you don't have necessarily as much of a grasp on the overtime. And I'm just mentioning, I mean, you know, I'm not here to give you budget advice, but I'm just saying, when the councilman asks if there's a downside, I have to basically end up saying whether or not there may be a downside.
Okay. Mariana, you have something to say to Bill?
Go ahead. Okay. So with regards to the question of you may not know about, there is a solution for that too, and that is a separate part of our financial procedures and policies that we have already implemented or started to implement, which is giving the council appropriate notice on what we're paying. So you're supposed to be getting a monthly report on how our budgets are doing. All of the expenses should be presented to council, even the ones that are under the 1,500 limit, and we've already discussed that with the Treasurer. She does send the reports of all of our monthly expenses to you. So to me, that's where we're transparent with you and where you can question any of those monthly statements from the Treasurer's office. So although we're not asking for permission, it doesn't mean we're not sharing it with the council members.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else from the administration or city council that would like to comment on this? San Jamal? Okay, no problem. Just making sure nobody here. Okay. Sir Jamal, Director, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I was involved with the financial team last year regarding this debated issue. I would like to address this council during this particular discussion session to differentiate and give some insight how to relate what you're trying to do in compliance with the charter. You know, I brought this to the attention of the administration last year, and to me and Mr. Miyaki, we discussed that in length. There's two different issues. The first one is whether the 8.9 charter amendment, I mean charter, you know, section, is clear about how to pay or not. 8.9 is written in third grade language. It gives everybody a straightforward direction how a warrant can be paid and how the process is done. There's no whatsoever controversy or, or kind of like confusion about how a payment can be paid. The problem you are going to have to deal with is whether you want to limit the ability of the mayor, as being given by the charter, to allow for necessary payment as long as it does not exceed the budgeted, you know, fund. Now, you, the council, approve the budget according to line items, not according to the fund. So the charter referred to a fund. The city fund is 43 million dollars. So the mayor, according to the charter, if you approve it based on the fund, has the authority, as he see fit or she see fit, to approve any payment, being necessary in his opinion as an elected official, according to the charter, to spend up to the whole fund, as the mayor wished. But from the legal point of view, Mr. Miyaki came last year and says, no, 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 we are not going to be able to approve anything beyond the line items because that's how the council approved the budget. And we had that discussion with Plant Moran. I wasn't happy about it. Plant Moran wasn't happy about it because here we are, we are actually limiting the mayor now to approve only what budgeted for every line item. And me and you, Chairman Abdullah, we had that lengthy discussion, and you... And me and you, Chairman Abdullah, we had that lengthy discussion, and you adamantly says, no, I want to limit the mayor according to the charter, according to how we approve the budget, which is line items. So now we are venturing into a discussion way beyond and has nothing to do with the clear language of this particular section, 8.9. You know, here's my advice to you. Please take it for what's worth and take it to the bank of budgeting. If you want to limit the mayor from spending what the mayor sees that's necessary to pay as the, you know, days come and go, you can. You can limit by amending the way you approve the budget. So you can amend the budget to say the mayor is limited to a pay, a payroll, okay, if they are not exceeding the total payroll amount. Or you can say the mayor is not allowed to pay, you know, during the, between the two city council meetings up to the budget per department. You know, please don't raise that five minutes or three minutes. I'm speaking here, you know, to make sure that you don't do something that you regret later on because there's a charter, you know, involved here. And that particular 8.9 is very clear. It doesn't need elaboration from CPAs. It need legislative actions by you that, you know, making sure to keep the budget flexible, to keep the mayor able to pay the daily, you know, necessary payment. So if you wanted to tackle, let's say, the payroll by itself, you can tackle the payroll by itself. You know, they can come up and says, well, you do an amendment to the budget allowing the mayor to pay whatever the payroll comes and calculated by pay loss.
And we've made, and we've made the change, Mr. Jamal, to be at $5,000 instead of $1,500?
Wait, wait, $5,000 for what?
For the motion.
Without prior approval.
Payments may be made for, wait, I'm sorry, let me go to the right one. Here we go. Payments may be made for the purchase of materials, goods, supplies, and other thing or things for a cost not to exceed the proposal that we have today, $5,000, which I had a conversation with the.
This is maybe not in line with the charter because the charter says the mayor is limited to not to exceed the fund, not to exceed the, whatever the fund is. So you are limiting the mayor to pay only necessary payment up to $5,000. I don't advise you.
No, 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 per payment, and then for a total amount, we mentioned today for further discussion at a council meeting, the total amount combined of such payments would be no more than $2 million.
I don't advise you to do that whatsoever because the mayor may have to pay a payment for $7,000 for necessary payment. So what the mayor going to do?
So then we set it at $7,000 as per the charter and as per this motion, they'd have to come back and put it out for RFPs and get approval by the City Council.
Wait a minute, the RFP has nothing to do, Chairman, with this. The RFP is under 8.2. It has nothing to do, the procurement has nothing to do with payment.
Okay, but if the, if the mayor wants to make a purchase of, let's use a hypothetical, $8,500, he'd have to go in front of the council body to get it approved.
If I may, Council Chair.
Glad, glad, Corporation Counsel.
You have to comply with both provisions. You don't basically say, well, we have this authorization that we went through, bowed through 8.9, and the mayor doesn't have to comply with the rest of the provisions in terms of procurement, just because. You have to end up going through the appropriate procurement. That's the issue.
I just want to make sure you're referencing the Director, right?
Yeah, this is, this is part of where we had discussions about this, and I just wanted to suggest that.
You had discussions with the Director.
There's a disagreement with Mr. Jamal and myself with respect to this issue.
Yes. So I recommend to the council not to approve at this time anything, bring Plant Moran down here, and let Plant Moran do a.
Okay.
Explain to the council, you know, further. I only, I only trying to do from my institutional experience, explain, you know, in plain English, layman language, you know, what's good, what's not. I personally oppose any limitation on the mayor to pay or not pay because it's given by the charter. Now, you can regulate what's funding it. You can regulate what the mayor can pay by regulating how you approve the budget. So you don't come and piece it here and there. You need to make your decision according to the city, you know, treasury, charter accounting, according to GAAP, according to the, you know, standard accounting practice. I mean, there is a lot of issues into this when you come and try to play, you know, with the charter and try to limit here and limit there. The charter is very clear. Give the mayor the authority as elected official to make the necessary payment when it is to continue and operate the city.
See, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. So this does not pertain to a person. So we're not talking about Mayor Bazey, or Mayor Jones, or Mayor Julie.
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about as a, as a body. I don't want any type of administrator to be able to make an open-ended decision. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, you have, you have then.
It's got to be cap.
Yeah, plant Plant Moran down here, and let Plant Moran, from their experience, expertise, there are too many different, you know, ways of understanding. Plant Moran has the GAAP expertise, they have the charter accounting expertise, they have the, they have too many expertise to come and explain.
And I respect that, but again, I'm talking about the position, not a particular mayor specifically. And for me personally, as a council chair, I don't feel comfortable leaving it open-ended for any mayor, Julie Jones, Bob Smith, Mayor Bazey, or anybody to make a decision on an open-ended amount.
Honorable, honorable council chair, please listen to me and listen to me carefully. By approving your budget right now, you are limiting the mayor to the line items and the budget. So this notion is that I am leaving, you know, open forever, it's not true. The truth is right now, the city budget, whoever the mayor is, he, she, you know, Jones, Max, Bazey, Abdullah, you are right now, the way you are approved the budget. The mayor is limited to the line item amount. Anything exceed that line item, they have to come to you for budget amendment. So.
Unless the amount is under $5,000 because things come up, and when things come up.
No, 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 you are not limiting, there's the $5,000 you're talking about or $1,500. It has nothing to do with 8.9, you know, warrant. The mayor can sign off right now on any line item up to the line item amount.
Okay, Director, we have to wrap it up. I was under, I was under the understanding from the Chief of Staff, from the Corporation Counselor, and from the treasurer that they were all on the same page and in agreement. So if this is not, then you guys got to get together and then redo this. But from what I understood, you guys were all in agreement, and they're all pointing to me that they're all in agreement, so.
The agreement they are on, that was triggered by me last year. So I know what they are agreeing on and what they are not agreeing on. I am just making sure, you know, I only interject.
Thank you.
So my amendment or my proposed one, I was involved with this, and I am just making sure, advising you because of my, of my trusted, as is public servant, the 5,000 or 1,500 has nothing to do, the limit right now of the mayor is not $1,500. The $1,500 is a myth, okay? And it's a practice like, like the City Corporation Council stated, a practice that the mayor stated that in the past to limit himself, you know, or herself in the past, that don't, don't get confused between $1,500 that, you know, make, make a mistake and allow them to approve $1,500. But right now, the charter stated, according to what you approve the budget based on, the mayor now is authorized to make any payment necessary if it doesn't exceed the line item. So forget about this $1,500, forget about this $5,000. Those are myth, are not reality and not according to the charter. So tackle your budget and bring Plant Moran.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mariana, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I think that we skipped the fact that we didn't read Section 8.9, which clarifies what Mr. Jamal is talking about. So I'm going to read it if that's okay with you.
Please, go ahead.
So it says, warrants, how drawn, shall not be drawn, when. No money shall be drawn from the treasury except upon the warrant of the mayor and counter signed by either the comptroller or the city clerk. Every warrant shall specify the fund from which it is payable and shall be paid from no other fund. No warrant shall be drawn upon the treasury after the fund from which it should be paid has been exhausted, and if such warrant shall be drawn, it shall be void. That's what Mr. Jamal is referring to, your budget limits the expenses, just plain and simple from what this is saying in the first paragraph. The second paragraph opens it up to what you choose to do, which is what we're doing here today. So the second paragraph says, no warrant shall be issued until the same has been first authorized by the council, provided, however, that warrants may be issued for the payment of any necessary expense without prior authorization of the council, if authorized by the mayor. But the total amount of such warrants issued between any successive regular meeting of the council shall not exceed an amount as the council may from time to time establish. It is up to you, from time to time, to establish that limit, which is what we're doing here today.
No, we're just saying it's not.
So the reason that this is important for us is because it delays our process of paying and reaching our vendors if we don't have guidelines, because everything has to come to you right now if it's above $1,500. So that's why it is important for the administration to establish that limit because we can speed up the process once we have it.
Okay.
Then the third paragraph, just to finish it.
All liquidated accounts and demands against the city shall be made, received, and audited
by the comptroller, who shall enumerate them on a regular form prescribed by the council and who, with the mayor, shall certify as to the correctness or incorrectness of various amounts on said list. Each invoice shall be approved by the official incurring the expenditure. So again, it is up to you on how to run the city. As the administration, all we are asking you is to give us some guidance and give us some flexibility because even with gas bills, for example, in order for us to pay Shell, which is our provider right now for some of our departments, those bills are often above the $1,500 threshold. So do we postpone and get our council suspended until they get payment two months later because of council meetings and approval? Or do we authorize to have that as a contractual agreement that we're allowed to pay everything up to whatever that GL amount is? And if we are exceeding that budget amount, then we come to you. So that's, that's how we're trying to fix some of the issues we're facing.
So I'm going to authorize and ask our city clerk in Dana to add this on next week's agenda with the changes in this particular motion in the amount, with the first one on Item C as a part of this motion to become $5,000, and then on Item D, if I'm not mistaken. Well, the one with the 1.5 million changing, they have to be $2 million. And again, just like I mentioned earlier to the council members and those in the audience, this is a moving target, so obviously, when we come to the council meeting on Tuesday, if somebody feels there's a different amount, we'll vote on a different amount. But this at least puts something as a starting point.
Thank you.
One second. It's on Corporation Counsel. Okay, so.
Do you have anything?
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead. There's nobody else on Zoom? Anybody else in the audience that has something to comment or speak on this? And nobody on Zoom? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and you have a good night.